I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are going to start with our swearing in of our new student board of education representative. Adam, if you'll do the honors.
Sure. Do it into the microphone and we'll make it official. All right, so you're going to repeat after me? I Edward Muldaill.
I Edward Muldaill.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Sorry, sorry.
I'm sorry.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to, oh, sorry. And to the governments established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
We're halfway there. I Edward Muldaill.
I Edward Muldaill.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member of a board of education.
For the office of member of a board of education.
That I'm not disqualified as a voter.
That I am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Pursuant to RS 19:41.
I'm not disqualified due to conviction of a crime.
I am not disqualified due to a conviction of a crime.
Or offense.
Or offense.
Listed in.
Listed in.
NJSA 18A:12-1.
NJSA 18A:12-1.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
All the duties of that office.
All the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations Eddie, it's awesome to see you up here. All right, let's move to discussion items. Number one, committee design. I'm going to give that to you, Dr. Hibs.
Yeah, so we had committee week last week and one of the conversations that came up is could we possibly see if we could combine days? So I don't know if this would work, so I wanted to throw it out to see if we could work this out, but we wanted to see if we could combine the nights of policy with human resources, perhaps a 4:30 policy meeting with a 6 o'clock HR. HR, that was a normal time before. And then with IA with business and do IA, which was early anyway, at 4:30 and keep business at 6:00. HR and business typically go the longest, usually go two, two and a half hours. So we were kind of thinking if we could do a Monday, Wednesday? There's no judgment there, by the way, it's a great meeting. It's, we were wondering if we could just combine it so we're not just four days in a row, so we can have two days of just 4:30, 6:00, and then 4:30, 6:00. That would, so would that work if we could do policy and HR on Mondays, 4:30 and 6:00? Can we start there?
Mondays?
Mondays.
And then business and IA Wednesday?
And then business and IA Wednesday.
Business first?
Let's try Ralph. I tried, man.
If we could get business down to like less than three hours, then.
I knew exactly where it was going with that one. Yeah, so policy with HR, 4:30 and 6:00 on Monday, and then IA with business, 4:30 and 6:00 on Wednesday. Yeah, if that doesn't work and we do another month of that, and then maybe November? Okay. Okay. How about if anybody has any entanglements, let us know and we'll keep it as is for October then, and then aim to switch for November.
Just let me confirm, I didn't switch October.
Okay, okay, thanks Scott, thank you everybody.
And are we still doing, if there is a conflict, like a virtual option, if we have to like leave or something like that?
Yeah.
And still be included, just still calling?
Yeah, that's, that's what you've done, right?
And of course keeps you.
Yeah, people have called in, sure.
Not often.
Yep.
All right, I'm going to facilitate the discussion on board goals, so pardon me while I'm going to grab that.
You want some help, you're okay.
It's Monday, Wednesday versus Tuesday, Thursday, right?
Well, it was Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So instead of Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, it's Monday and Wednesday.
So business is going to change on Mondays?
Uh, hold on, go back. If it works, yes. If it doesn't work and those things don't work, we can just regroup. Just gotta let me know if it doesn't work. Oh, okay, awesome.
All right. All right, so we'll start the discussion on board goals. I know that we've, we talked about it last meeting and now's the time for us to kind of formalize it a little bit more. So after looking at the kind of topics and categories, I picked the four to five, I'll give you the five most popular ones on the board. If you want to parent down to four, we can, but not every, we can't do every bucket, so. Number one, the first goal would be academic. Second, safety. Third, mental health. Fourth, technology. And fifth, recruitment and retention. So let's start with academic because that was the most popular. All right, so just as a reminder, when we're creating this goal, this is going to be like a 10,000-foot view. It's not going to be very specific, so we're just going to make sure that we hit these areas as a board, okay? Everybody in agreement with these, first I'll start. We don't have to have five, we can do four, but is everybody in agreement with these?
I'd like to propose an additional one to consider.
Okay.
Like, and I think it would be appropriate for board goal, but I think fiscal responsibility is another topic that, you know, we are supposed to be governance for the school. And I think these are great ones, but one of our responsibilities, I think, also is ensuring that we're fiscally responsible for the taxpayers, so that's one that I'd vote to put on there.
Okay.
So Carol, I wanted to bring up something too. So when I was looking at other districts, I was kind of confusing in my head. There's district goals and there's board goals, and I wasn't sure if, when we're looking at board goals, if we needed to think more actionable items by the board, since the board's driven by policy, you know, and leads with vote, do we have to take those and kind of manipulate them to make sure that they're things that the board can actually do altogether, like within the committees? Do you know what I mean? I'm not sure if that, because some of them I noticed, the district goals were more global and the board goals were more, you know, these are things that we can do.
That we can control.
Like I was bouncing around ideas and I put, you know, the academic ones. The board will assist the superintendent's goal of elevating academic excellence and then like things with how we vote, because that is the biggest way that we can influence things. I don't know, just my thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, it's valid. You know, I agree with you because these are board goals, so we're, we have to own them and at the end achieve them. And, you know, I looked, Dr. Hibs was kind enough to provide me with the goals, the board goals from like 2021 and 2022, and I mean, I don't know if we achieved them or we didn't. I mean, maybe some we did, I don't really know. So whatever we pick for this, to your point Kathleen, we're going to own them and if we don't achieve them, then we have to unpack why we didn't achieve them and then we probably have to put them on the next year. Like I just don't really know where we are in terms of goal setting, but nonetheless, your point's well taken. So let's, let's back up for one second though and look at these. Do you feel like those six is a lot for us to manage?
I, I think it is. I think, could we combine safety and mental health maybe? Because I think those two go together, like, you know, potentially. I think it's similar topics, similar areas, right?
Sure, I mean, we could. I looked at safety more as a little bit differently, but we can definitely figure out, we can make a goal to combine them both.
Just a thought to jump in.
Yeah.
Well, the technology one and the academic one go hand in hand. Because if we're looking to use Linkit and assessment, you know, technology which is supposed to drive that, I feel like those go.
That makes more sense to go to put together than mental health and safety, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you don't mind Kathy, so let's combine.
Thanks Kath.
Academic and technology and then safety and mental health. So then we have four. Is that good? Right? Safety and mental health.
These are goals that we're monitoring, monitoring?
These are our goals. So anytime, how can I say this? When we're spending an exorbitant amount of time on something that we start to think, why are we talking about this? We could always go back and say, is this conversation anywhere close to those goals? And if it's not, we can almost use that as a little bit of a peer check too. If they're not part of those goals, then we probably shouldn't be spending a lot of time on it.
I think this will help us stay straight on not focusing on the how, you know, because that's not our job, so I think this will help us stay, you know, on the line that we need to be, that we're not trying to micromanage and do what we're not supposed to do, and this will help us stay on track.
Correct, this is going to drive everything that we do in the coming year.
What do we expect it to do with academics?
Well, I mean.
That's the superintendent and his staff.
Well, correct, so I'll go back to what earlier. As a board goal, we're looking at a 10,000-foot view, right? So I would think as a board of education, we're going to want to make sure that we focus on academics, right? As a board of education. So you're correct, we're not doing anything, but we're making sure this board goal trickles into district goal, which trickles into superintendent goal, right? That's the hierarchy.
You know what, it might help too. Do you want, can I read the 2022 one?
Yeah.
This is what you had for academic in 2022. To ensure that student assessment and reporting systems accurately and ethically reflect student achievement, remove barriers of misinterpretation, and inform all stakeholders of the academic progress and scholarly attributes that contribute to the post-secondary success. That was academic for 2022. Academic for 2021 was to support the selection and integration of appropriate digital platforms to assess, collect, and analyze multiple measures of data so administration can make data-informed decisions to make instructional decisions. Those are the last two.
Ballparking right now, right? Maybe I can box the bucket for a moment.
Right.
And then we'll, we'll zone in.
Right, so then what I want to do, I just want to get a feel for, now that we have them like kind of bucketed together, I'm going to put something together for you guys to look at, and then next week, I won't be here, but you'll have to vote on them. So I just want to make sure if there's any dissension or any concern, now would be the time to say, because if not, I'm going to develop them and then put them out to you guys.
Do you want to develop them all yourself, or do you want help, or?
I mean, I would prefer if I had help, that was going to be my next, like if, I would prefer to not have to do it all. I mean, Scott, I would say if, since you brought up fiscal responsibility, if you could throw something out for fiscal responsibility, I'm happy to take recruitment and retention. And then anybody else want to jump in with the other two? If not, I can obviously help out in any of these, but.
Looking safety and mental health.
Safety and mental health. No pressure, down there. Academic and technology. Okay. All right, so we have Stacy for academic and technology, Eileen, safety and mental health. I'll do recruitment and retention. Scott, you'll do fiscal responsibility. And so it doesn't exclude anybody else, we'll throw it out to the group and then chime in, because for us to wordsmith it here, I think it'd be a little bit difficult. All right.
So just we're all on the same page, when do we want to have them drafted by and to you?
Well, we're going to be voting on Tuesday, so I would say if we can have them.
Friday, Saturday?
I mean, I would say by Friday, and then if we have to discuss over the weekend a little bit with each other, I don't think it's going to be, we have some good, some good examples that Dr. Hibs gave, so we can kind of use that as a framework.
And if you get them by Friday, I can put them in the packet for everybody and then Eileen can email them out.
Good?
Yeah. Can I just do district real quick?
Yes, please.
So as far as the district goals are concerned, I wanted to look at five areas that I want to make sure that everyone is okay with. Elevating academic excellence, safety and security, fostering well-being, which would be safety and mental health, professional development, and then technology, because we do have two really big implementations. Kathy is, a good shout out, is leading our Google transition, and then Gretchen and Pam are leading, and Annette are leading our, our Linkit initiative as well. So those are, I think, five really good areas that we're going to flesh out for the entire district.
Can you go through them again one more time?
Academic excellence, elevating academic excellence, safety and security, well-being, so it's safety and, and mental health, professional development, and then technology. You know what, and I'm wrong. We're also going to add recruitment and retention to that as number six, as discussed. Is everybody okay with those six concepts? Awesome.
Yeah.
And then for, for my personal goals, they're going to, there's a, there's a lot of carryover, but one little difference. So elevating academic excellence, safety and security, we're going to make a goal all about Linkit, a goal all about Google, and then a goal about community interaction. Those are my, my five, with recruitment and retention as well. Five plus one is six. Everybody okay? Can I frame this? Okay.
Everybody good? Ralph, good?
Good.
All right. All right. Let's move on unless there's more discussion. We'll move on, okay. All right, moving to old business. Any old business?
Do you have that one that we have to vote on?
That superintendent report? Yeah, I think that's what.
Sorry.
I think that's what, toward the superintendent.
Sorry.
You didn't do it wrong.
Okay, sorry.
We're not doing under old business?
Under report of the superintendent. Any old business?
I got, I got one real quick.
Dave?
So with the vouchers from the summer school stuff?
Yes.
I'm going to carry it over, did anything happen with the freshman transition?
Yes.
Teachers, all good?
Right, all good. All good.
Thank you.
You got it.
All right, I have something for old business. I thought Ralph raised his hand, okay. Liaison schools. We talked about it a little bit here and there. I have, it, tell me if I'm wrong with what I have so far, but I'd like to finish this tonight if I can. I have the high school for board liaisons, Stacy and Kathleen. I have Ralph, ECC, the pre-K building, correct? You like the little kids? All right, well, you got them. TJ, I have Eileen. Wedgwood, I have Connie. Bells, I have Dave. And that's all I have. So I think.
Where's kindergarten?
So you need the elementary schools and birches?
Where's kindergarten?
Kindergarten is in the elementary schools.
I'll do Hurfield if you want, that's where my kids all went.
Hurfield? All right, so Scott, you're going to.
So it needs to be covered, Carol.
Okay, hold on one second. We need Whitman, Birches, OVMS, Chestnut Ridge, and Bunker Hill.
I'll do, I'll do a ridge.
You do a ridge?
I'll do Bunker Hill.
All right, then I'll do Chestnut Ridge. All right. Wait, who's doing Bunker? Eileen, you said you're going to do Bunker? I have Whitman and Birches. Okay, well, I'll do Birches. And Ralph, you'll do Whitman. Okay, let me read this over. And then, would you, would you mind if I asked Eileen to email the principals? And then I'll explain a little bit about board liaisons. So high school, Stacy and Kathleen, OVMS, Dave, Chestnut Ridge, me, Bunker Hill, Eileen, ECC, Ralph, TJ is going to be Eileen, Whitman, Ralph, Birches, me, Hurfield, Scott, Wedgwood, Connie, and Bells, Dave. So we can talk about this at greater length at a different meeting, but I just want to preface, bringing back board liaisons does not mean that we have an open invitation into walking into the school ever, so we can't. If we ever want to go to a school for a function, we should be invited to go, number one. Number two, if we're not invited and we'd like to go to the school to see something, we have to go through Dr. Hibs. So not that this is going to be a problem for anyone, but we have to. Eileen?
Okay, so not knowing they have to go through Dr. Hibs, I did call ahead and did go through TJ.
I knew, I knew you went, you're good.
Okay, all right. So that you know first?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, no problem, so.
Doesn't apply to like public, like they have a play or anything like that, right?
Absolutely not.
Nope, so I'll cover all that. So just, if you're acting as a board liaison for the school, we have to get permission first from Dr. Hibs and say, with your permission, can I contact the principal and come to this event or take a tour, I haven't been there in forever, or whatever, right? And then obviously it's of the discretion of the principal for us to go in, okay? That's it. The purpose is so that we can come back to the board and talk about all the great things that are going on in the school. It is a component that I think has been missed. I think that there has been some areas of gray in terms of board members overstepping at times, getting into conversations with staff members that we should not be doing at all. So if it becomes problematic, then obviously we'll address it, but we're truly there as a guest and we shouldn't be having sidebar conversations with anyone and facilitating like a, a human complaint box as we walk through the door. We're really there to just support the school and come back to the board and let the public know all the cool things that are going on. That's the spirit of it. Not that anyone thought it was different, but I just want to make sure I give the disclaimer. As far as you going in as a parent, if you happen to be, you know, I'm a parent at Chestnut Ridge, I wouldn't ask permission to go to an event that any parent would be invited to go to, but if there's something else, then I obviously would. So, and that goes for anybody. If you're a parent, obviously Kathleen and Stacy, totally different, right? If you're a parent, you're not going to ask permission to go to the high school. But I think if there's any question of it, please let me know. I think it's going to be a great thing for us to bring back to the board, I just don't want it to cause any problems with ethics or any principals being upset that we're abusing the privilege to go in and be a liaison, so. Any questions? Nothing, okay. Eileen, would you mind sending out to the principals, the liaisons, the board liaisons for their school? Awesome, all right.
And Carol, sorry, I, I look at it as a liaison as more as just giving out information to the public as far as events and what's going on necessarily.
Correct.
That we're going to be walking around the schools and constantly in the building and looking at more as disseminating information, correct?
Um, yes, so it depends, right? So it depends on the school, it depends on how many activities. You know, in past years, I've been invited by the principals when I was on the board previously to come to different events, and there was a lot of them. They would give me a running.
I mean, just not just to keep going, like just events, it'd be a purpose to go, is my point, right?
Correct, correct. We're not just going to like, you know, schedule to walk around and check out a program, not our job, right?
And if, and if I may, just under the School Ethics Act and the Code of Ethics for school board members, you're being a liaison to a school building does not give you any, I'll say special powers or, or any preferences or anything like that. And like Ms. Chilla said, you can't go wrong, you can't run afoul of the Ethics Act or the Code of Ethics if you get permission from the chief school administrator to be there.
Yep. I just want to compliment my tour of TJ, what's been done in the cafeteria, making it very kid-friendly, spacious, the library, the new carpeting, just a warm feeling all around, so I just wanted to put that out there.
I've got one for the high school. So they did have an open house before the school started specifically for freshmen, and I think because of COVID and everything in the past, these sorts of things weren't always possible, and it was absolutely wonderful to let them wander and try to find their classes on their own with some semblance of independence in an environment where it was quiet and staggered and there weren't, you know, the crowd of kids passing in the hall trying to get from one place to the other. So I thought it was absolutely wonderful. I could see a lot of relief on student bases too.
That's awesome.
Yeah, they're great.
Anybody else?
And TJ does look great, by the way, and Trish is back there, Trish giveaway. It's, it looks like a whole different building, actually, a lot of our buildings look like whole, entirely different buildings right now. It's really great. A lot of hard work.
Thank you.
Our staff are great.
Thanks to you. All right, motion to open to public? I don't have any yellow cards. Okay, motion to open to public?
Second.
Okay. Ron Lucchini.
Yeah, hi. Came here tonight, actually, when Mr. La Liberty mentioned fiscal responsibility, sort of part of the subject weaves into what I was going to talk about tonight. And specifically, let me make these qualifying statements. Five, last five or six years, it has been a lot of craziness related to board education. And Washington Township has suffered in terms of our achievement. I don't think anybody could argue with that. And you could say pandemic and you could make all the excuses in the world, but it comes down to basically you're, you're, you know, board of directors of a company, all right? And you have a fiscal responsibility to run things professionally, because think about this, 40,000 homes out there, people are paying anywhere between $3,000 and $15,000 in taxes, that's 150 billion-dollar budget, not billion, thank God, we're getting there. 150 billion, a million dollars, somewhere in that vicinity, of taxpayer money, all right? And you have the responsibility to act professionally up there and to be serious, all right? To be serious about what you're doing, not to be nonsensical. And what we've seen recently by a certain member of your board of education, by certain teachers in the district, the way they handled that Malatsky thing, all right? Attacking a kid. What we've seen is the fact that we're not getting the bang for our buck in terms of the seriousness of what goes on in that school system. It's based on politics and many other things. So last month, we were fortunate enough, Mrs. Baker gave us an insight into what really goes on in the board education. She sat there, and I can't believe she's not here tonight, but I don't really care. She sat there and at one point said, I have a text message, I have a text message. And then she started making points, which are usually negative against anything related to the superintendent, because she doesn't like him for some reason. But those text messages. Um, but those text messages then became operable, okay? And I, I did an Oprah on those text messages. And they were from staff members from the Washington Township, uh, high school where the clique, uh, presides, the insiders' club. And, uh, here's one, uh, what one person was texting to Mrs. Baker, I think it was to Mrs. Baker, not Mrs. Baker, to her. What's the timeframe? How long can they take the, the retake? What if they can't show, or they don't show? Can a zero be given then as a sixty? Um, okay. These were questions that show that somebody is feeding Miss Baker. She's not capable of answering, asking pertinent questions, all right? That, I'm paying, we're paying tax dollars for a hundred and fifty million dollars for this? So that you could s- you know, I think a real good idea would be, every board member release their phone number, and then we can pick our favorite board member who we wanna text during the course of a meeting. The other thing about that, Mrs. Chilla, Mrs. Baker is letting a faculty member or whatever, even if it was a resident, usurp the process that we have here, which is you get five minutes up with this, uh, microphone. Now, if we're all able to text, if I'm able to text Ralph about something, then I am in sense, in a sense, butting up in front of everyone else and not waiting my turn 'cause I have a lackey on the board education by the name of Mrs. Baker who will do my bidding for me. The other inside, uh, the other text was, the sixty isn't in the first semester for every assignment, blah, blah, blah. But then there's another one to another faculty member. I don't know if it happened during a meeting or whatever. All I know is that in response to something, Mrs. Baker, I think, not the faculty member, writes, oh my God, I'm dying, got this text, lots of laugh, so tell me why the district hired the superintendent who should be renamed. Now, listen to this, when you're gonna make a nickname for somebody, you make a one or two, two words, right? Here's the, the nickname they have for you, Dr. Hibbs. I, I have better ones, I'll give them to you later. Uh, Mister, this is your new name, Mister Listen To Me Because I Have A, I can't even remember my, I have a doctorate, and I'm the only one who, who can make good decisions. That's your new nickname, it's about thirty words. And then the other, the faculty member writes back, instead of writing back like, hey, Baker, what are you talking about? She writes back, right, anyone can get a doctorate. I think you need to do something about her, and I want my money spent, and I'm sure the taxpayers do, uh, on more productive things like we saw tonight where, you know, she's missing tonight, so we just had the five goals and a good discussion, and that was it. Thank you.
I'll be back.
Thank you for the warning, thanks, Mr. Lucchini. I don't have any other yellow cards. I just wanna make sure if anyone wants to speak at the first public session? No? Okay. Motion to close the public?
Second.
All right, moving on. Um, let's go to committee reports, HR negotiations.
Uh, and Mr. Sweeney's gonna do that, 'cause Mr. Lindsay's not here.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, I will share these in place of Mr. Lindsay. Uh, we met on September fourteenth, those in attendance were myself, Sean Sweeney, um, Dr. Hibbs, Sean Lindsay, and Carol Chilla. Highlights from the committee meeting, um, specific to the agenda item B four, determination was made that the Board of Ed needs to decide how to best address non-unit longevity concerns raised by our current Board of Ed member. Ms. Chilla and Mr. Lindsay discussed that it may be in the Board of Ed's best interest to wait until non-unit contracts are addressed in the spring of twenty-four. Um, item B nine, discussed how the co-curricular stipend for senior trip advisor at the high school was being broken up from four stipends to three with the possibility of it returning to four if and when necessary. Item B ten, informed members that the WTPA, um, unit has officially requested to open contract negotiations. Ms. Wechter is in the process of scheduling meetings with Dr. Hibs and Mr. Sweeney to begin information gathering and the planning process before official meetings commence. Item B eleven, discussed details from the district's recent meeting with Brown and Brown Associates, our health benefits advisor. We specifically explored eliminating the sixty-day wait period for health benefits that currently exist for new full-time employees. This is impacting our recruiting and hiring efforts as neighboring districts promote the perk of benefits starting on day one of hire. Brown and Brown will be gathering more information about other districts for comparative purposes, indicated that we can seamlessly switch to a no-wait period at minimal cost. Item B twelve, discussed how having, uh, certified staff members at each school to be board-approved as emergency subs at the instructional and non-instructional rates of pay, these staff members are called upon as a last resort and will be giving up their planning, uh, slash prep periods to fill in as substitutes. B fifteen, Mr. Sweeney discussed vacancies connected to hard fills, hard-to-fill positions. Currently, special education, educational technology are proving to be the most difficult. He's networking, networking with local colleges, professional organizations, and via social media and efforts to identify qualified and certified candidates. Lastly, B seventeen, Mr. Sweeney requested to extend the superintendent's authority to emergency hire through October. Committee was in favor of this decision as we are still actively hiring new staff for critical positions. Thank you, Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you.
Good question on that.
Sure.
Is that extension of the emergency hiring, did we have to vote on that?
Um, I think it's gonna be on Tuesday.
Oh, okay, all right.
Um, next is policy, student activities?
Okay, so we met on Monday, September eleventh. The agenda items discussed a senior privilege for two students, there were letters from the students' parents and administration and transcripts that were shared. Uh, Regulation forty-two fifty, Terms of Condition, Terms and Conditions of Employment for Non-Unit Personnel, on for a second read, it was just, uh, the first read was just changing the words Director of Human Resources, so, simple change. Um, let's see. Policy twenty-five twenty, Instructional Supplies, adopting Strauss-Semye policy language. The Regulation twenty-five twenty for Instructional Supplies, adopting Strauss-Semye and changing some language such as the definition of supplies and supply procedures to clarify each one. Uh, clarification was added in Part C three to state that students who are eligible for free reduced meals will not be required to pay for supplies. Uh, Policy fifty-five thirteen, Care of School Property, also adopting Strauss-Semye language, which is mandated. Uh, the Regulation fifty-five thirteen for Care of School Property, language is changed, um, from using Strauss-Semye delineating teachers, teaching staff and student responsibilities with regards to the care of textbooks. Language involving library books was removed because of the use of lengthy, lengthy penalties that had not been something that schools have enforced because of the long list of possible penalties, there's not really a way to keep track of all of those. Um, so, that was changed. Policy eighty-eight ten, Religious Holidays, recommending to abolish simply because we already have Policy twenty-two seventy, so it just kind of cleans it up, so there's only one policy. Same thing, Policy ninety-one hundred, Public Relations, recommending to abolish that because we already have that in place for Policy ninety-one twenty, um, Public Relations Program. Non-agenda items, um, I know Mr. La Liberty was concerned about resource materials, Dr. Nathan did give an update on that, meeting with, uh, Melissa Bartnett and Media's, Media Specialist the next day on nine twelve, uh, to review, discuss units within the curriculum and the curriculum process. The English nine course that was in question last year has been revised, and the book in question was removed from that part of the curriculum. Um, I did wanna say Mr. Sweeney had given us a list, um, just a paper with a list of specific steps that administration will follow when reviewing and revising Strauss-Semye policy, because there are a lot of policies that need to be looked at that are outdated or just need to be changed, so it's gonna be a good guide to streamline that, and we really appreciate that in the committee.
Awesome.
So, and just to clarify, I did follow up, I, I thought your committee notes were great, thanks for getting those out. On the, the draft policy that I wrote, um, I did still wanna address, I think, Dr. Hibbs, you're gonna talk to Dr. Nathan about that, just to look at the process of-
Yeah.
Around that, not just that one book in the curriculum.
We actually spoke about that today. And, um, for those of you that don't understand, that's the concept of parental slash guardian notification for sensitive topics that might come up in the curriculum, so we're gonna, we're gonna vet that, and then the, the goal would be to have something, uh, discussions and then have something for you in October. Of course.
We putting that back on policy, should I make a note? Okay.
For sure. Thanks, Kath.
Mm-hmm. All right, moving on to business.
All right, business. Um, we had myself, Stacy, Dave, and Ralph. Tried to keep it on two and a half hours, sorry, Ralph, we were really close this time, but. TCU update, um-
We didn't make it, did we?
We didn't make it, we were close. We got the electric approved, I think we were waiting on the building, uh, and plumbing, and we should have an update on that, right? 'Cause that's supposed to be the fourteenth.
I can actually, yeah, I can give it to you right now. Can we do that?
Yeah, please.
Um, okay, so, and Janine, if I go awry, just let me know. Um, so we definitely have, the CO is done, uh, maintenance and, and staff are moving in, furniture, hanging whiteboards, mounting cabinets, et cetera. Um, we actually are going to, just so you know, we're gonna fence in the, it's the breakers, right? Breakers, Janine? Um, the outside breakers are just, they're open to, we're, we're putting a fence around that, so kids can't go over and chuck the breakers down. We're also gonna put on downspouts, too, for whatever reason, it did not come with downspouts, so we're, we wanna make sure that we're actually filtering water away appropriately. Um, PO for cameras is done, so you're gonna see, it's gonna be real quick, and in, that's it. Um, the drops will take a second for the computers, um, other than that, we're gonna be, um, in there, elements is gonna be in there, music is gonna be in there, um, technology will be in there, and then, back left is small group instruction, which we actually, uh, I'm gonna give Bob credit for this one, he actually went out and got a very cheap door frame, we bought one for, I think it was literally like twelve hundred dollars, and we're gonna turn that big room into two small group instruction rooms, which gives Herfield two extra rooms instead of one. Um, so we have that, and then we'll, we'll do that at that same point. So, it's actually beautiful, it really is beautiful. Um, it, it was a long time coming and took a lot of work, uh, on all fronts, but the awning's up, the concrete's up, the steps are up, the LED lighting are up, um, we're just waiting on small thi- small things now, so we're, I mean, it's, engine is full steam ahead.
Thank you. Why are we looking to have kids in the, in the TCU?
Well, when I said to Bob today, right, Janine, we talked about this today, I, I think it's gonna be in the next few days. Computers might take a little bit longer with the drops, but for the elements and for music, and then for the other one, it's shortly. He was just, they were hanging up the whiteboards and doing those types of things now. And that was early today, so they probably got a lot more done towards the end of the day.
Great, thanks for that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Breaking news on, on the TCU, and I think-
Thank God.
We also talked through the facility forms, with the change of use that we have to submit to the county for some changes on preschool rooms, as well as, um, the, that one Herfield room that's being cleared out, breaking that up into two to allow for extra space and also some, um, address some of the concerns that, by the, um, special ed teachers that were brought forth, so I think that was a great plan you came up with to create that extra space.
And that's, I, I think that's all net, so, given, there you go.
That's good, good to see. Yeah, good team effort there, great job. Uh, energy audit update, we, we got an email back requesting more information, which we, we provided, and we should be ready to respond by the end of the week.
I, it's actually, so-
This Friday?
It was done on Friday.
It was done Friday? All right, we got that complete, too, look at that, breaking news here. All right, we, we talked about summer work projects, uh, how well that worked, we're gonna continue to do that next year, talked about some of the things we should, should do there. Um, air conditioning, we did talk through some concerns with some of the air conditioning in some of the buildings, um, talked through the condition, some of the, one of the constraints is that we can't replace units while it's hot, 'cause it, we'd be taking them down for several days and the building would get really hot, so we've scheduled, um, working on some of those units once the heat is passed in, like, the November timeframe. Uh, we also talked about, um, the ROD grant that we put forth to try and address that long-term, as well as the energy audit, hopefully we'll be able to get some funds to, uh, upgrade or replace some of the, uh, aging equipment there.
Scott, I, I don't know if we talked about this, but Janine, we received word recently that the ROD grants, we were approved, correct?
Yeah. So, we didn't get our official, we got word that we were approved, but we didn't get the official-
The details, yeah.
Letters yet.
So, we got the-
But we think we're approved.
Yes.
That's great, then.
Yep.
I'm getting all kinds of great news, man, this is great.
You are. That's what happens when you do, you know, in between time. So, we got some, yeah, and then energy audit, we'll let you know as soon as it comes.
The last seven days, that's great, all right. Uh, we did talk through the student, student supplies, uh, policy as well, uh, we talked through the posters that were at the state, stadium, how we created those, uh, using some of the supplies that we already had on hand and that we have the machine at Central to create that, and we talked about potentially using, uh, students in graphic arts to do that in the future. Talked through a bunch of things on the finance agenda, uh, including the finalization of the agreement for the SLEOs, for the, you know, police that we have in the building. Um, and went through some up, upcoming purchases, and, um, we talked through, like, rates in, for use of outside, use of fields and athletic facilities, and we talked through the committee structure. Uh, I think, we also talked about, uh, email and data retention, and Dr. Hibbs is gonna circle back with, uh, Ari or Adam about confirming how long we have to keep some of these items, just 'cause the longer we keep email and data, the more we pay for that, so, um, looking at coming up with a policy around retention of those things. And, uh, that was pretty much it.
Just a real quick, I don't know if this was discussed in business or where this fits in, but obviously, we're entering the season of, like, you know, uh, drama club plays and coming up, and I know there were some concerns last year in terms of sound systems and microphones. Where are we, Janine, in terms of sound system for middle school, high school?
We have one more, um, legal question that's being cle- cleared up between Ari and, um, the member of the, that union. Yeah, I ought to.
So, for the, uh, so the, there's two different buckets here. The first bucket's the high school, right? So, for the, for the RBPAC, we had issues with some of the speakers, so in order to have that done, bid has to go on the street, we're finalizing language in that bid, I think there was something, there was a sticking point, we wanna make sure that we're gonna, um, we weren't gonna go awry on, so we wanted to make sure we were doing it right. As far as the middle schools go, um, we're, it's still in the process of purchasing the speakers for them and the microphones, like we said we would, out of the infusion of money we got back from the state. They will have what they need.
Got it, okay.
We also talked about, like, introducing a potential warranty requirement with that.
Yes.
So, you know, that we can say, hey, you're gonna install this, but we want it warranted for five years or seven years, so if there's issues, it'd be taken care of with the warranties.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, great. Um, are you, Scott, all done with business?
Good.
Okay. Uh, instructional affairs.
Okay. Um, we met on Wednesday, and it was Eileen, Kath, and me, um, Dr. Hibbs, Ms. Gerber, Dr. Gregor, Ms. Gromaldi, Dr. Nathan, and Ms. Miller. Um, we had a really nice discussion. Agenda items discussed were, um, that the, um, uh, annual field trip, the, um, evaluation tool, MPD plan, and mentoring plan are all approved annually. Um, we, Dr. Nathan talked about the course of study manual, um, that's also approved annually and approved each year. Um, Ms. Gromaldi gave an overview to the summer counseling program, she talked about how the students were identified through universal screener and other data. Um, we had two counselors per grade level, two days per week, uh, services were provided individually, in a group, class lessons, and there was also family consultation provided. Topics covered, uh, social-emotional learning, academics, and transitions into new grades and buildings. Uh, she reported on how many students were identified, and how many actually participated. I lost my notes when I was doing this, so thank God for the minutes. Dr. Nathan, did you put the minutes in? Whoever did, thank you, because they were great. Um, I don't remember the exact numbers, but I can speak to the high school being incredible. A lot of students were recommended, and a lot of students, like, took up, took the opportunity, so it was great. And, like I said, the family consultation time was great, and there was virtual meetings as an option for families who could not, um, get transportation. Um, Ms. Gromaldi also spoke to, um, the eighth grade transfers to, uh, parochial or GCIT. Um, we are, um, starting the nurture-har approach next year, which is a program that fosters resiliency, and it is a partnership with the NJ DOE and Rutgers University. resiliency, and it is a partnership with the NJDOE and Rutgers University. It will be piloted at Wedgewood and TJ, and year one involves training staff. I've worked with this program before, and it really speaks to resiliency and compassion, and I'm working with students in a positive manner. It's very well done. Ms. Gerber also spoke to making an application for our third and fourth grade students to use for virtual tutoring with NJDOE identified vendors for ELA and math. ELA, TutorMe is one-on-one, five days a week, in school and at home. There's also a writing lab, which would provide immediate feedback, and math, which is ST Math, which is tutoring with a live tutor. So, we're looking forward to seeing where that goes. Ms. Gerber will be preparing a document to highlight the benefits of the summer programs we ran. She also spoke to our pre-K expansion. Little achievers would like to enter into a partnership with us. We are scheduled to meet with kinder care, and we are still looking at Pittman leasing options, and we are planning a preschool, like leadership team to make sure we're moving in the right direction. GT ECC was accepted into the New Jersey Preschool Inclusive Educational Project for preschool systematic change facilitation. This will help us support our team and our teachers with high-quality resources, tools, and strategies to improve preschool inclusive educational practices within the district. And we'll get targeted technical assistance and a school-based team to improve the positive outcomes for all of our kids. Dr. Gregor spoke to Hibb Appeal and equity meetings coming up, new teacher DEIB training and new administrator training, MS Police Stoppers Program, and new partnership with A2Z Equity Coaching and Research with PBSAS through Panorama Education. And PBSAS is Positive Behavior Support System, just is working on positivity throughout the school. Then we spoke about, Ms. Gerber gave a Lincoln presentation on common assessments, pacing guides, and intervention manager, which will really help as far as working towards improving academics and our test scores and academic achievement overall. Ms. Gerber is recommending, for human resources, Ms. Gerber is recommending compensation for teaching, a teacher filling in a PEA vacancy. Tech integration specialists are going through a routine stipend, ESL teacher to be approved, and a few more things. Ongoing issues, there's, just, we're looking at the disconnect between elements in grade school and humanities in the middle school. We obviously can't do anything immediately, but we're going to start looking at data, looking at the program throughout this year to look at changes moving forward. We talked about an apprentice program, which Dave has been really key in helping us start to develop. Ms. Gromaldi is investigating virtual reality as a move to explore some apprenticeships to start, and we are looking into a partnership with Camden County College North American Building Trades Union will also be explored. And we talked about board goals, and that's it.
Awesome. All right. All right. So, we're going to move on to the report of the superintendent. I'm going to read in number three separate. So, I'll do items one and two, and I do three separate. Is that okay? Or would you prefer to do one with you?
Let me just look to see what we're talking about here.
Okay.
It's the professional development plan.
Oh, yeah, that's fine. However, you'd like to do it.
This 24432.
Yep, you got it.
Okay. So, do we do it separate or together?
Within that group, I would do the one student matter separately, as a separate library.
All right. Motion to approve under report of the superintendent, items one and two.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes. And under report of the superintendent, I'm going to read this in, motion to overturn the finding in HIB incident, number 244329. Looking for a second.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Roll call.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
All right, moving on to instructional affairs, motion to approve items one and two.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
All right, moving on to policy, motion to approve items one through seven.
So moved.
Second. Okay, discussion?
I had a couple of comments on some of the policies. I know, I sent them to you, Dr. Hibbs, like on J4, for instance, like on supplying book covers, are we going to make the updates to those policies before the next reading?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so that's, that's on that one.
For those who don't know, we're going to, and Scott, we're going to add that, yeah, we're going to add back in the concept of library books, but not with the fee schedule, because they were, that was absent from the policy in a look at with Mr. Sweeney.
Okay, and you're going to put some in there, says like May, to give more flexibility.
Yeah, so there will be a small change into the care of school property. It won't change the spirit, but I'll make sure, Sean, can you highlight that for the board in the packet?
And then we'll just, in the next reading, you'll have, mark the changes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely. But it'll be a second read, it won't be a first read again.
Yeah, it'll be the second read with the noted changes.
You got it.
Okay, all right. Good.
Anybody else? Discussion?
I have something real quick. For J7, I have to abstain if it has my wife supervisor in it, correct?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
That's the element. J7, we're going to send that to committee.
Yeah.
Right?
Sure. Mr. Sweeney, you have that, right? Thank you.
Now, my understanding, we're going to approve it tonight, so it's approved.
We're going to do the first reading.
Yes, and then it's going to be sent to committee to look at for updates and changes and stuff like that, right?
Correct.
Yeah. We'd already done the first read on it. This is just adding in the director of human resources. I just, with all that went on in, you know, when I got here, I just missed it for the second read.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes, for one through six, abstain from sending.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Moving on to student activities communication, motion to approve item number one.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Moving on to human resources, motion to approve items one through 53.
So moved.
Discussion?
Okay, just for the people that are retiring, especially Ms. Lori Muniz, I know it's Ms. Morrison, 30 years of teaching at TJ, an amazing teacher. Sorry that she's retiring, but I'm sure she's glad that after 30 years, she gets to spend her time with family and enjoy. So, just wanted to reach out.
That's awesome. 30 years is amazing.
Yep, I'm also, I want to call out, oh, sorry, I want to call out Ms. Bishop, science teacher at Orchard Valley Middle School, 19 years in the district. She's retiring, congratulations. And then we have Ms. Deborah DeJohn's letter of retirement as secretary at Bunker Hill. She's worked for the district for approximately 25 years, so congratulations and thank you. And then we have, yep, Ms. Holly Schilling's letter of retirement for Bunker Hill. She's also worked for the district approximately 25 years. So, congratulations and thank you very much for your service. We have some holes to fill at Bunker Hill there, right?
Okay.
All right, any other discussion or comments?
Another one about abstaining.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Like A5 has a list of different stuff, I abstain from two, can I just use initials instead of abstain from the whole thing? Or just abstain from the whole item?
A5, I'm not.
It's L1A5.
It's, I think it's professional development, right?
I got a couple.
Yeah.
Can I, just using this one, or I have to abstain from the whole line of them?
Initials for.
So, if you look at L1A5, there's my teacher, my wife's supervisor.
To the, yeah, to the extent that one of the individuals or more of the individuals may supervise your spouse, my suggestion would be that you abstain on those specific individuals, and you can note that when you abstain, that you're abstaining on.
Just initials.
The initials.
Okay.
But you could say, if you wanted to, yes to every, you know, other than the individuals I named, yes or no to the others.
Anybody else? All right, roll call.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Someone abstain from L1, initials EH and JH, L5, initials CT, and yes to everything else.
Yes.
All right, moving to finance, motion to approve items one through six.
So moved.
Discussion?
Just, I just want to call out on number one, you know, I'm glad to see we're finally getting this agreement signed, and we worked through everything with the chief and the police department, and, you know, there's one thing I want to say about them, and now we got a police officer in our building, and the last time we had a safety committee meeting, they were all up on the stage, and their comment was, you know, this is right after Uvalde, and they said, you know, our policy is, anything's going on, we don't wait for backup, we're just going in. So, I think, I feel really good that our police department has our kids' best interest, and, you know, they're willing to put it all on the line for them, so thank you.
Yeah. And Scott, just to that 10-second ad, today, I actually went over to Roland College in Closer County, and it was an active shooter training, and I sat with all the PD. It was great. It was great discussions. It's very powerful. They actually showed a video from Uvalde, which I had never seen, which was really scary and powerful, but that's the one thing that didn't happen in Uvalde that I think would happen here, and it actually happened right away in Nashville as well. There was actually, people don't know this, was a 77-minute gap between at Uvalde when the person entered and when the threat was neutralized, whereas the one that happened in Nashville was minutes, it was barely minutes, and it really was a lot of, a lot of good discussions today, you know, in protecting our students, our staff, and the community.
All right. All right, roll call.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Moving on to special education, motion to approve items one through three.
So moved.
Discussion? All right, roll call.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
All right, moving, we don't have anything for negotiations, moving into new business, any new business?
I just, I had a thought. I was thinking about the board goals and the district goals, and the way in the past we have not done our due diligence with making sure things have been followed. I think, I think the goals that are applicable to the committee meetings should be in the committee agenda, so that we're paying attention, because I know, as a teacher, you have all these plans and all these little objectives, and it's hard to stick with it unless you actually have it in front of you.
Yeah.
To that end, if I could just also make a suggestion, some boards, and I think it's a good idea, some boards on certain action items will reference a specific board goal, so on their agenda, we're approving X, and this goes towards this district goal. So, I've seen that done, I don't, I just offer it because it may be helpful for you to consider.
And then if we report out on that, then the community knows, sees the progress that we're making.
Yep. Great idea.
You may want to consider reiterating in every committee our mission of Washington Township Schools, right? In every, like, just to reinforce it, too. It's not a bad idea, so thanks for bringing that up, Kathleen. All right, any other new business? No? All right, motion to open to public.
So moved.
All right.
I'm not going to let you off the hook that easy. I want to get back to the text messages during the board meetings. I would like to ask a question, and at the end, you can answer it after I sit down, because I have something else to talk about. I just want to know, as a board, or individually, yes, I agree, or no, I don't agree, that staff members text messaging board members and vice versa during a board meeting, where it appears staff members are giving that board member information and things to say or whatever, and where the board member is coming back with the staff member making sarcastic comments about the superintendent and the fact that he has a doctor. Yes or no? That is a bad reflection on the Board of Education and its professionalism. Yes or no, after I sit in? Yes, it is? Or no, it isn't? Doesn't bother me, because we're running a you-know-what show here. All right, speaking of running a you-know-what show here, there's a guy in the community, he's a public figure, his name's Chris Mylum, and he is an insurance broker who once had an interest in the school system, I'm sure he still does, for the health benefits. I think he carried it one year, and then the next year, they didn't renew him for whatever reason. He's also the chairman of the Democratic Party here in Washington Township, and he's also the head honcho, so to speak, for that group that has been destroying the school system, in my humble opinion, Children's Last, or Children's First, I'm sorry. He's the brains behind that group this year, before it was a Mrs. Cozempel, and we saw what that brings us. Three Board of Education presidents resigning within a year, okay? A woman on the Board of Education that does nothing but just start trouble for the sake of starting trouble, who tells everybody, don't vote for Children's First, and then turns around and votes for them herself. All right, this is what we have in this community. This guy runs this particular group, of which some of you sitting on the Board of Education should be ashamed to be even associated with, I might add. All right, having said that, he wrote a Facebook post, Dr. Hibbs, that I think has some serious implications, the inferences I drew from it. I'm not going to read it specifically, you know, word for word. I'm sure you've seen it or heard it, or no? I'm, I'm sure you've seen it or heard it or no. All right. Let's try, we can't have back and forth. Anyway, he basically writes, what I drew from this, he basically writes that, not Congress, what does he run for? State Senator candidate Paul Moriarty called you on the phone and apparently you got so nervous. I mean, I don't know what happened, but you just automatically went against everything you said here for the last two months as it related to the dishonorable society and to the situation with Mrs. Chilla's daughter and adults basically attacking her. That was, that's what that was all about, ladies and gentlemen, to start a political war. That's what that was about. It wasn't really about Malatsky or any of the other nonsense from that group's standpoint. But he writes that you got so nervous that you must have told Paul Moriarty that the entire time it was laying heavily on your mind that you, you know, you didn't, you didn't know whether you were going to make that decision or not. And then, I'll quote him, "He was not ready at that time to make that decision. You weren't." This doesn't change why this happened. That's what needs to be uncovered here. Hopefully, the responsible parties will own up to all this nonsense, right? This guy's writing that you basically turned around after telling the public that this was in the best interest of the kids, that we, all the, all the things you said, which all turned out to be true, too, by the way, that you needed a certification, that the staff members were all screaming, this was never talked about before, then we found out it was talked about 10 times in the last three or four years, all right? So we went through all that nonsense. And now he's saying that even though you said this to the public, in reality, the entire time, what we're all supposed to draw from this, Mrs. Chilla, you're not supposed to notice, but it's all Carol's, Chilla's fault. She forced you to do it. That's what I got out of this, okay? This is the guy and he wants to find the responsible parties. Well, you know, the responsible parties, he's one of them. It'll look in the mirror. That's why we're having the problems we're having, all right? So I do want an answer to my question and I'm glad we now know about Mr. Mylum. And Dr. Hibbs, if you would respond to that conversation, I don't think you had that conversation, Moriarty, or it went that way, let me put it that way. But this is politics here in Washington Township and I just want to show you how detrimental it is. And I want the board to answer yes or no, should we be carrying on like this as board members?
To the extent that any board members wish to respond to Mr. Lucchini's question, I caution the board members in responding as it relates to any specific employee that may have had communication with a board member. If you want to answer generally, if you think that it is appropriate or inappropriate, I don't have a problem with you giving your opinions as, as board members. But just to be clear, we're not going to talk about a specific situation that may have occurred. We're talking generally. I just want to make that clear so that we don't have any personnel issues. Because my concern is if we weigh in on something that may have already happened, it could be viewed as evaluating a current employee. So if you want to talk generally, no problem at all.
All right. I'll jump in. I'll answer the question. I think it is quite appropriate for us as a board to support the superintendent. It is our job to make sure that the district is well-run, to ask questions, which I think we do a pretty good job of doing that. But it's certainly our job to, to help Dr. Hibbs in his efforts to run the district. It's our job to be professional and to support him in that capacity, especially being here since May 1st. So that's my answer to your question. I think as a board, we should be professional, period. Do I think it's inappropriate to speak ill of the superintendent in general? Yes, I do. I think that since May 1st, that Dr. Hibbs, without being evaluative, is coming in new and we should do everything we can to support his efforts to run the school district. So I don't know if that answers it, but that's my response to your question.
Carol, well said. I concur. I also, for myself, phones turned off when I'm sitting on this board.
I'm just going to respond generally. I think we're all bound by this code of ethics. I actually carry it around in my, in my bag just to remind myself, you know, we, we just can't overstep our bounds and sometimes it's easy to get tripped up because, you know, the code of ethics, we, we can't get involved in trying to run the day-to-day. We can't try to jump the chain of command. And it's tough sometimes. We have people come up to you all the time, they're like, oh, you know, so-and-so that I know is applying for a job. Hey, that's great. Good luck to them. But we can't do anything, you know? And I think people don't understand how limited we are as board members and, and how confined we are with this code of ethics, that we are just governance for the system here and we got to be careful that we don't overstep those bounds.
Yeah. I think, you know, we just spoke, had a good conversation about board goals and what we want our district to do. And I think, you know, we have to support Dr. Hibbs and what he's doing and we hired him and we agree with him and we have, we have good conversations and we question. But, you know, we're, I look at us as a team and we're working for the kids and we're working for the community and our, we have to act professionally and do what we need to do. And we can't focus on the micromanaging and on the, on the how. And, you know, a lot of times the line is crossed. And I think, you know, I respect everybody's time and everyone that's watching, everyone that's here. We need to stay focused and, and do what we have to do and do the right thing by the kids and by the community.
Yeah. And we, and I, I feel like, too, a lot of us that, you know, we have parents of kids, sometimes our cell phone's there in case of emergency. Like, there's times when my kids are older, but they're, they're home. But that's, that's the reason that it's there, you know? And I feel like that's, that's an etiquette thing that we all have to be cognizant of. And, and that, as a board, our individual actions reflect on the whole board to a certain extent. And it's important to be aware of that, too.
Okay. Sure.
First off, thank you, everybody. I do feel very supported. This job and I think being in education anywhere right now is exceedingly hard, right? But we're doing a lot of great things in Township. And there is so much pride in Township. And I'll give you a great example. I had an odd experience the other day. Never had it before in my life. So my son goes to Kingsway and Kingsway came to Township to play football. And I had my Township sneakers on. I stood on the Township side. I wore my Township garb. And inside, in my brain, I'm rooting for number one because he's number one, right, to me? And when he left, he said something to me that was really something I already knew because it was really evident right away when you come to Township how special certain things are. And I'm, I'm not kidding when I say this. He left and he said, I wish that our student section was anything like Township's. And if you could take what we have in a bottle and sell that, we'd be billionaires. And that's, you can't, you can't fake that, which is just amazing. So it's, there's so much great here. And thank you for your support. Mr. Lucchini, I did not change my course based upon the Assemblyman's call in any way, shape, or form. I took the Assemblyman's call out of respect, but I don't ever drive left or right based upon a phone call. I, I weigh and I try to do what I think is best for the system and the staff and the kids. I stand by our decisions. So in no way did I, did I change course and, you know, the other stuff in that email, you know, get to the bottom of it. I'm not quite sure what, what's even being said there, you know? I don't even, I don't know. I try not to pay attention to, to Facebook or whatever that even was. I learned a long time ago, Facebook doesn't make me a better human. So, thanks.
And real quick, just in the light of transparency, and I'm sure it will come up, not tonight, but I did receive a text from my son the night that the drama club was here. I have it. If anyone would like to read it, it was just my son to me. And I just spoke to the kids because they are friends with him and I wanted to share his sentiments. But if I have it, if anyone is in question of, it's been questioned, so I have it. For my son.
Thank you. All right. Marcy Dewey?
Hi. How's everybody doing?
Good.
So I have a list.
Good.
Everything that's crossed out in pink, you guys covered tonight, so that's good. This is stuff that's been kind of lingering, probably, well, even before Dr. Hibbs got here, just a couple things. So some of it's easy. First thing I want to say is thank you for listening to the public about Spirit Parade and kind of making all those changes. I know that there was a lot involved in that. I know it wasn't just a simple, you know, change of time on a announcement and we're done. Because I know that, I just know that there's a lot involved in it. So I appreciate whoever was involved, but anyway. Simple stuff. Bunker Hill Middle School, there was a student here asking for basketball nets. Did that ever happen? And I know you can't answer me, so I'm going to ramble them and then hopefully you guys can pick up.
We'll answer them all at the end.
Yep.
Yep.
The next one, with Power School and the kids get to see their schedule, is there any way they can break out that block for the lunch that says lunch early, lunch late? Because kids are like, I don't know, like, I'm crazy. I get a lot of communication, so I'm just rambling off stuff that's been thrown at me. On the website, is there any way that articles and the information that gets put on there can be dated? Because when I pull up like anything, it doesn't tell me when it was written. So like, if I type in homecoming, it's going to give me every single homecoming article for years and years and years. And I don't know what year it comes to until I start reading it. So if anybody can get some dates on articles, that would be great. Scott brought up something about discipline a while ago and communication with parents. So if that's still in policy, that's fine. Just let me know it's still in policy. But if something's been resolved, I would like to know. Where am I at? It's been a couple of years since we've done away with class rank. Is there any chance we're getting that back? I know personally my children liked it because it, and inspired them to try harder. And even if it's not bought back and we still stick with that 1%, whatever it is for all the different percentages, is there anybody that the kids can find out so it's not a secret? Like, I don't know why it's a secret and why they can't find out. And then is there any, been any update on the grading policy or are we still just, still, or is that still in policy, too? And then the last thing, this one I just added. Dr. Hibbs, you mentioned your goals that you want to work on. You said community. Is that community overall or community within the district? You're like, do I count? Like, community.
You count.
So, and that's, that's it.
Awesome. Thank you. We're going to answer your questions as best we can. Thank you. All right.
Want me to take them?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I think I can probably hit all or most, right? How are you?
I'm good.
Good. All right. So Spirit Parade, thank you for the thank you. So I haven't been here to experience the Spirit Parade, but it was kind of important for all of us to have it the way that it's been. So I didn't really want any big changes in year one after I, you know, before I could see something. So we put it right back to where it was before, the 5, and then we pushed the football game from 6 to 7. So it's going to be a packed house at, that was, I think, the main concern here. It's going to be a really packed house. And what you may or may not know is that we pull in about upwards of 3,000 people for football games. So our first game, actually the Kingsway game, I think, was the first game that was really packed. Holy Spirit was not as packed, but we're expecting Winslow that night to be very packed. So we put some, I think, some good safeguards in place. We have people stationed at strategic areas. We roped off certain areas where some of the kids were getting into trouble. We put provisos out to the middle school kids because they can't just get dropped off in a muck because they were getting in trouble. So we moved it back. So thank you for the thank you. No, we have not done the basketball nets yet, but we are still figuring out how to do so and where. Honestly, with all that we have going on, Mike and I haven't had a conversation about, you know, where and what he would like. Power School schedule, that one got brought to me. Carol actually brought that to me. It was too late for me to do anything about it, but moving forward, we'll break out the lunches into.
Help me out, right? See Eddie, Eddie, what's his name?
Yeah. No problem. Totally get it. It was just, it was just too late in that moment. I honestly, I didn't lay eyes on it, to be honest with you. I don't, I don't see everything, even though it sounds silly for me to say that, I can't see everything. I didn't see what that looked like until Carol showed me. And at that point, it was already like the weekend. I couldn't, I couldn't do anything about it. But we'll, we will absolutely take that into consideration as we move forward. So Mike, you're going to stay on me about basketball nets. Kath, you're going to stay on me about Power School. Kath, you got the articles and see if we can date them. I'm sure there's a price something we can do. The discipline and the communication, I don't think anything's changed. Not on my watch. Scott?
I think it was two different things. I think one was the parent communication one, which we talked about tonight that we're going to follow up, we're going to bring up again in October about the, I think it was the sensitive issue type of communication with parents.
Yes. For sure.
That's one. And then the other thing I've brought up in the past is looking at the code of conduct again for.
The consequences, correct?
Yeah. I think elementary, we redid it. That looked really good. We were looking at, you know, secondary.
Okay. Class rank, I'm going to kick that one to Dr. Nathan. We haven't really talked about the concept of class rank. I can tell you that from, you know, my children do not have that, but at times it's, it's somewhat frustrating to try and figure out where your child is. Great example would be I was trying to see if my daughter was in line to get the Star Scholarship and it was more like pulling teeth from a rhinoceros to figure out where she actually landed. So we'll be happy to dig into that for you, but I'm kind of new to that discussion here. But we will do that and come back. Pam, put that back on IA for us. Grading policy, we actually are taking that back to have meetings with staff and then we will come back out and probably have some communications about grading. I don't know what will change right now in the moment as the train's already out of the station, but that, that work will get done together and then we'll communicate it out as things change.
Excuse me, can you just communicate currently right now? Because I think there might be a little bit of, maybe a little bit of confusion.
Okay.
Can you comment currently because, Dr. Nathan, when you gave your presentation, currently what is the landscape in terms of the 60? Can you just reiterate for the public, what is the grading policy?
Yeah. So really, nothing changed. We did, everything was as it was because we pulled the reg. So first semester, 60 is the floor, correct? Second semester, you know, you can give zeros, right?
60 is the floor of the semester grade.
Yes. Semester grade. Yep. So it's exactly where we were last year. So we're going to huddle back up, have conversations, which we're in the process now of scheduling those. And then we're going to take feedback and then come back with a revised plan. And then my goal, just so you know, was focused on community interaction and just the way that we disseminate information, how we put out accomplishments and opportunities, and making sure that we're doing everything we can to reach and connect with the community. But certainly includes you.
Can I, can I just jump in real quick?
Yeah.
Marcy, just back on class rank, because you're probably doing the same things that I'm doing and a lot of other parents of seniors, just to kind of un, like, figure out the process when you're filling out all these different things, what is the class rank? You're just, you're just kind of stuck because you don't know what to do. Also, there's been some comments about unweighted GPA versus weighted, just to make sure that, like, parents and students fully understand exactly where they stand. I think there's a little bit of just confusion and question on how that, how students can find that out. So I don't know if that helps your question or not, but I think that we just have to understand.
Can you add that to the IA for us?
How we, in terms of applying for colleges. I think that it would just help, so.
No worries.
Okay.
Is there, is there like a parenting, parents of senior, how to, how to help your kid with colleges for dummies class that the district can?